This is the July 3 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And it is officially 5:04, going to the meeting. And the, do we have any public comments?
Roll call and establish a vote.
Yeah. I'm just, it'll work out, so.
Yeah, so I'm not disruptive. Alright. Alright, you have roll call for us? I am ready, ma'am. Excuse me. Vice Chair Bertson Lydia Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas Palm?
Here.
Thomas Palm, sorry. Commissioner Tamara Robertson?
Here.
Commissioner Carson Blaisser?
Here.
Commissioner Russell Scott?
Here.
Commissioner Karen Decker?
Here.
Commissioner James Miller?
Here.
Thank you. You have a call.
Absolutely. That's great. Okay. So, before I get started, if we don't have any public room on that, I want to welcome all the new faces today. This is nice to have a lot of new faces. Our first item, consent agenda item, is to approve the meetings from the April 3 meeting. And actually, Carson, you were the only one there beside me, so did you look at those?
I don't have a really firm, sort of, sort of, right, government. I will let me approve the meetings. It was from previous meeting.
Okay, should I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. I say that, let's, what can I just do if I show hands?
Uh huh.
Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, unanimous? Alright, regular agenda. The first item is to discuss and take possible action to accept the resignation of Chairperson Andy Davenport, and he was zoning. That was effective on June 6th. There's really not a lot of action here, but my purpose in putting this here is we've got to elect a new chairperson. We've got several new people. And I didn't want to do this tonight with all new people. I want to give you all a chance to really think about, you know, who wants to step up into those shoes. So, I'll entertain a motion to review the letter from Andy. And then the letter be accepted, did you want to read it? I don't think you need to read it. Okay, so you want, I just wait for the letter. Okay?
I second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this? Basically, Andy was our chairperson. He did a great job. I was the vice chair. And I want you all to know that I do not want to be chairperson. I'm just putting that out there right now. I've got too many things on my plate with my mother-in-law, so I might have to think about that. Okay.
He should be missed.
He will, he will be missed. He was a great chairperson. Very organized, very thoughtful in his presentation. So, he's got big shoes for someone like him. Okay. So, we have to accept. Is there any, any further discussion on it?
There's not much we can say about it, a few months ago.
Yeah, well, I know. Okay.
You can't go ahead and say it.
I'm really, I'm trying. I trust you'll come there.
We should bring the virus virus.
Alright, so all in favor of the motion? Aye. Alright, so now we're moving into the workshop to discuss the city council's request to research, research the possibility of rezoning the triangle from a right-of-way to a city park. So, this was coming to us in May on our agenda. And since we did not have a quorum, Andy and I canceled that meeting. And so then it was coming again, and we didn't have a quorum, so we canceled that meeting. So, it's in our plate now, or on our plate. So, I want to give you all a little bit of background for those of you who are new. When it came to me, I did a little bit of research and found out that the city didn't own the triangle. Yeah. There was no owner of record. And so, I'm like, well, shouldn't we own it before we decide to make it part? So, I sent a note to Sudan that stated that. And then she contacted Hayes County. And Hayes County came back and said, well, here we go. We've given you ownership of the property, and we've zoned it as a recreational property. Exempt property. So, anyway, so they did some of the hard lifting on it. So, if you're looking, it's on the screen, I think, right?
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Do we have to further have it surveyed so we have a legal description?
No, they did that too. They didn't survey it, but they have a legal number on it. So, it's.
A survey. That's awesome. Well, it already wasn't a plaque, I think.
Yeah, it was.
Oh, okay, so it was already on the plaque, so you can't, you can't give your actual.
Right, and it already, it was, it was on the plaque. If you looked at the old pad, it, it was sitting there all nice and neat. It just didn't have an owner of record.
Like that?
Yeah, see, it didn't have a number or owner of record. So, when you clicked on that, it said no owner. So, now it has the owner as City of Wood Creek. And, but, in order to rezone it as a park, even though they gave it to the City of Wood Creek and designated it as an exempt property, we still have to have a public hearing to officially rezone it. And one of the things that, we'll, we'll talk about that in just a second. But we need to think about having a joint one with city council so that we don't have to have two distinctly separate public hearings. It saves people a lot of time if they come to one, you know, meeting, and we go back-to-back on our public hearing. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it works logistically, but, yeah, I mean, so we don't have to council meeting.
We would, we wouldn't have our meeting first. We would have, yeah, we would have our meeting first. And then hold the public hearing, and then it moves council.
Alright. And this is one of these no-brainer issues. I mean, who on earth would be opposed to?
No.
But the best time we even spend, only time, is the veteran, in my opinion.
Yeah. Yeah.
We did the same thing September 20th of last year.
Yeah, we did. So, I mean, try not to have two meetings on two different nights, in other words. So, okay, so is there any further discussion on this particular item? Okay, then I'm going to close the workshop at by?
14.
14? And I need a motion to take action on council's request to research the possibility of rezoning from a right-of-way to a city park.
I'm going to have a motion to sound back.
He's got how that.
I'm going to have a motion to sound back, I'm right here, we may as well have one record.
We need to, basically, we need to have an action item on city council's request to reserve, research the possibility of rezoning the triangle. So, are we in?
The research is done, you're talking about public hearing now, right? So, motions?
The public hearing is number five. We talked about the steps.
Are we making a recommendation to council? So, I move that we recommend to council that this space be rezoned from a, whatever it was, to a park.
Second, second, second.
Great, that works.
What is your official thinking?
Carson.
I have first, no, it's the first second.
He went first.
Some seconds, sorry.
Yeah.
First second, then the second there.
Alright. A right-of-way to a park. Okay, you want to reread it? Just in case?
Recommend to council that this space be rezoned from whatever it is to a park.
A right-of-way to a city park.
City road, yeah.
Yeah, from the city right-of-way, because we now own it, to a city park. Okay.
So, you want to have the motion.
Are you going to amend it? We can amend it, but it's.
It was just a clarification.
It's just a clarification.
Yeah.
It's right-of-way.
You hadn't restated it.
No, I haven't restated.
So, it's okay.
Okay. Alright. Ready? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, now we're going to recommend to council that we have a joint public hearing to rezon the triangle. We need a motion to do that.
Motion that we have a joint public hearing about the park.
Okay.
To the council. I second that.
Alright. So, I have a motion on the table that we hold a joint public hearing to rezon the triangle to the city park. All in favor?
Both.
Okay. Alright, next one is discuss and take possible action on city council's request for review and approval of a preliminary replat blocks 9A and 11A in the Oak Orchard Enclave, which is over up to Leeport.
I decided to refer. Forest Town. Sorry? I decided to refer to Forest Town, yeah.
Yeah.
Across.
It's.
Across 12.
Across 12, right there.
Yeah, okay, I know.
Yeah.
Forest Town.
Directional South.
South. Okay, so this particular piece of property has, is passed through the spiritual process, so we just need to decide if that, if we agree with that.
What is the change, excuse me, what is the change?
The change, we have that.
It's separate, you're wanting off into two.
Yeah, well, actually.
I think all of the one, two, they showed.
They were three, actually, to begin with. And then they, they changed it once before. And now, they're putting most of the property up front, from what I understand, and some in the back. So, would you like to talk to this? You look like the owner of this property.
I'm not, but I am representing the owner. I work with the engineering company that prepared the plot.
Good.
Originally, the property was four different plots of land. They were all planted. Two were combined into one lot, and then another two were combined into one lot. It was open in two. Now, we're just moving the internal line between those two amended blocks to make one lot slightly larger or even slightly smaller. It's essentially all we are doing.
These are the same owner?
Correct. Yes, it's the same owner that owns both of the tract of lands. One already has his primary dwelling unit on it, and then the other, he was building a new home on there. Land shaming is a property for one of the children. Not entirely sure on that. But I do know that they are, they have built the structure on there.
So, is it, what is it, some, the single-family residential?
Yes.
A lot will be changed?
No. Yeah, it still means, yeah, it still meets all the requirements under normal circumstances. It could be an amended flat. They would not require council or commissioner approval, but because of an error on one of the previous amended flats where they eliminated a drainage unit unintentionally, we had to do the replat because that drainage unit needed to be reestablished on the back corner.
Okay. So, does anyone want to make a motion that we can discuss? That we?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the replat blocks 9A and 11A in the Oak Orchard Enclave.
I second.
Carson, second. Okay. Any further discussion with that? Just double checking. Ready to vote?
I have a question.
Okay.
I mean, do we need, is, do we need to first make a motion to approve this to city council? Is that what we're doing?
That's what we're doing. That was the motion. Alright. Alright, we're clarified and ready to vote. Ready? They're all in favor? We're in a great, great tonight.
Yeah.
I love it. Okay. The last thing on the list is our discuss and take appropriate action on the planning and zoning permissions by annual review of the City of Wood Creek's comprehensive plan. That was that summary of action thing with all the red on it?
It's done.
Okay. And I'm going to point out the two areas that will need to be changed in the comprehensive plan for City of Wood Creek.
Have you seen it?
No.
None of it yet.
I can see the eye charge, but I can't stop being able to read it.
Okay, go to the summary of action.
I didn't answer, we need to change this.
I won't.
Yeah, that would maybe.
Okay, so, there were, there were several targeted areas. Natural systems, physical systems, physical systems and land use. A lot of this stuff has been at least preliminarily addressed or has been addressed, like regulations for treats. We created a treat board. There's a lot of things that were already done and in place, okay? For two years into it, a lot has been done. There's still a lot to do, but there's a lot that's been done and addressed. One of the things that.
What? I'm finding, I can't.
Oh. One of the things that we felt earlier that had not been addressed well is the community education programs on rainwater collection and oak wilt drop tolerance, landscaping, reducing. Yeah, so, I mean, those are things that need to be, you know, addressed. Okay. Increasing approved parks and green spaces, we're doing that. We just added the triangle officially. A POSAC grant made improvements possible at the triangle and other places. Okay. Moving down into physical systems, I'm not going to belabor this. It, it needs to kind of go as it is, but I want you to know where those fine-tuned things were. Renegotiating franchise agreement. City of Wood Creek doesn't have a whole lot of input into rates, like PEC does that themselves. They've been working with Aqua Texas to do a lot of good things. Cable internet, telephone, trash and recycling waste connections that work very closely with the city for bulk pickups and all those emergency freezes and everything else. Strategy two, repair all roads in the City of Wood Creek and create a long-term maintenance plan. Okay, here's where it changes. We no longer have a platinum roads panel. And the master transportation plan is really a road maintenance plan. And the platinum roads panel has become the infrastructure and mobility board. So, those are the two things the wording needs to change in our comprehensive plan. Okay? And change it to infrastructure and mobility. Because infrastructure and mobility is taking care of all of that area. Creating walking trails, that's been assigned to infrastructure and mobility land board as well. Alright, fiscal systems, strategy one. The city has moved from a general reserve funding process to a fund balance system. So, in other words, things that get earmarked, this is to identify specific funds, what these funds are for. And if you were here a little earlier, they were talking about the fund balancing information. So, that needs to change because the maintenance and operations budget and reserve funds are kind of different now. We don't have technical reserve funds, is that correct?
No, we don't.
You do have a reserve fund?
There's a reserve fund.
But you still have the funding, the fund balancing, correct?
We still have fund balances, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't eliminate reserve.
No, it doesn't.
Never counting first.
It is. Anyway, so that was, that was kind of something that, before he left, Kevin said that was a different thing. And then increase income outside of adware and taxes. And we have a new cigar lounge and a grill and a.
Cypress wall?
Yeah, not Cypress walls, but.
Of course.
Oh, no.
Yeah, double, double J.
Higher.
Yeah. And then seek advantageous development and franchise agreements in our ETJ. Well, that's been kind of slashed by our legislature a whole lot. So, people are leaving the ETJ, so we've lost a lot of control in that area. So, that's kind of a different change there, you might make a note of that. Pursuing alternative funding, grant applications for water collections at city hall, community block grant, POSAC grant. Aqua Texas has donated a water fountain for the triangle. You know, these type of things have already taken place, they're on the radar. And then maintain Wood Creek's character and promote sustainable resource management with regard to land use. Okay? Preserve the rural and residential character of the community. We've got some progress. A committee has been formed to review code revision. The Brook, Brook Meadow overlay created one acre minimum lot sizes, protecting the watershed. We've got a water task force formed to address water conservation. And Deborah's going to have a cow when she sees those typos. Let me just say, I have, the teacher in me is going. Okay, so that's basically it.
So, if I understand correctly, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, it's, I didn't see it. Really, the only thing that we're recommending is the change in coverage from the platinum free board of the.
Platinum panel.
Platinum panel.
The infrastructure.
And accept the remaining, the, the rest of the changes.
Pretty much, except for the, the fund balancing thing that Kevin brought up during that. And they can choose to take our recommendations, or they can choose not to.
Sure.
So, the recommendation then will be reviewed by council individually and accepted, or as a block, but individually and decide.
So, it happens like what you do here, which is there'll be an item, I'll, as your liaison, I'll be moving it over onto a council agenda. I'll include all the work documents. And so, council will see those before the meeting of the 72 hours, whatever, before their meeting. So, they'll have been able to review the information first. And then it gets opened up into the meeting, then we discuss it, then we vote as a block. So, that's what council, like you guys do here, that's what council does there.
Yeah. So, what, what we need to do is make the recommendation just that. To submit this with highlighted changes to infrastructure and mobility instead of platinum panel, and just fund balancing in the fiscal systems.
Do you just want a better explanation of that?
I think so, I think so. Because it says maintain suitable reserves and manage the annual budget to reduce excess spending, and it just kind of is very vague.
Yeah, see, and I, I think that we're absolutely doing that. We need things changed with that, but we went from QuickBooks to FundView.
Yeah.
But there, there might be a way to better explain the, the, you know, just going to FundView helped that process a lot. Because it's more, it's more like, I mean, if you're, if you're in accounting, you've got, you know, cash-based and accrual-based. You know, FundView, fund-based accounting is more like accrual. So, you can go in and say, you can, you can say, you know, we're going to get, you know, $200,000 over here, we don't have it yet. But we're going to put it over there, we're going to put it in that fund. So, we've got something to manage against it, you know? So, so it just gives us some, some more flexibility.
And target.
Yeah, with, with knowing what's actually going on.
Right.
So, if I make a, make a point, as a chair, you still are allowed to make motions.
Yeah.
I'd rather.
Practice.
I say, it's just you made it so well, I was just like.
But anything?
You do it.
You do it? We won't take the dinner.
Yeah. Keep all that word stew in my mouth.
I know, everybody's, everybody's got motions, and we just, we muddle for them, so. Okay, so, I would like to make a motion that we send our biennial review to the City of Wood Creek comprehensive plan to city council, highlighting infrastructure and the mobility as a change. And in fiscal systems, highlighting, you know, what we're actually doing there as a city.
City.
Alright. Any other discussion?
Is there a way to also move forward all the things that you've noted that have been done, completed, or going very well?
It's in here.
Okay.
This goes, this whole document goes.
Okay, it's not just the.
No, no, no. I just said, I chose to highlight those two particular things.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, it's fine, they'll get this whole thing.
Okay.
And then they can choose what parts of it, you know? But again, two years into it, there's a lot that's been done. There's a lot of red on here. And usually, when a teacher does red, it's.
It takes the color. Why did it do green?
Should I vote for green?
Green might be cool.
Okay, I'll send it back to you all of green, how's that?
I'm, I'm going to be a little process checkler. So, there would actually have to be a motion, because you've already made the motion to send it. So, it's now.
Then, it was a joke. Okay. Don't say we have to send it to red.
Well, you're not, you can.
I'm not allowed to change the red to green?
Yeah.
Yeah, but if you copy it, it won't be red, it'll be green.
Without them being voted on, best way of joking.
That's.
You can vote on to do that.
Oh, anyway, I was making a joke about a teacher and her red being a bad thing, but this is a good thing, because there's a lot of red on here.
There's a lot of progress.
No, that could be voted in sin, so that's what we'll get.
Okay.
So, the red, typos, the typos never.
Yeah.
And put your name on it at the top.
Let's vote on it, okay?
Let's vote on it.
Well, I mean, if I'm going to interrupt, you can actually vote to say, with her edits. And then she has the ability to, you know, turn it to green, clean up the typos.
No, that's.
It's fine.
I'm going to send it just like it is.
I'll just.
Okay.
Yeah, because we never make typos.
Alright, all those in favor? Okay. And we are at the end of it. Do we have any announcements?
I have sort of a question. So, I think we should talk about the duties and the time required for the next chairperson.
Yes.
Particularly to the newbies here, okay? I've been on this committee for two years. And I know that, when I was in that chair, I had to spend a lot of time thinking all those things right. I'm a spotty attendant here. I don't have the patience to dive as deep as Andy did and what's frustrating to do so. And Lydia has done the same, still. Okay, so, I mean, if any of you guys would like to be a chairperson, you need to recognize that this is pretty darn time-consuming and probably frustrating, because many times, the work we've done in this committee has been overrun by city camps and the multiple men off. Okay, so, it leaves you frustrated as well. That was part of the hardest reasons to leave as well. So, I want you guys to think about it and then to talk about it here. What your time, commitment, and stress. what your time, commitment, and stress levels are before you sort of raise your hands and then say something you regret later.
And whoever does take that position, I will say that I'm willing to stay as co-chair if y'all want me to. But I just don't feel like I have the time committed to give to that. But I would be helpful.
It would be a good idea to put this on the agenda for our next meeting.
It is going to be on there.
Okay. More discussion. Yeah, discuss, you know, more details about what you refer to to us as the, you know, the duties and responsibilities and requirements and what part of the position. Anybody that we knowingly want to recruit and we think would be great for it, that's either on the board or not. You know, we can discuss that, so we can make sure that we're this right first.
Well, I think it's, this discussion should be had now. Not at the time that someone is going to say, okay, I'm ready to...
Oh, I agree, I agree, yeah, I don't want to...
That's why it was not on the agenda this time.
So I think now is a good time to do, you're a leader.
Well, I didn't know we could do this, but on the agenda.
Well, it's given out. We're, we're doing announcements.
Yeah, and so we can't have, it has to, well, you have to make a motion and put it on the agenda for next time to have the discussion. Then after that, you can have another meeting and vote on what you want.
Isn't that part of the...
The motion right now, because we're in the announcement.
Isn't, isn't that when someone is nominated and seconded, then you go to a discussion? And that's when the discussion is held?
Yes.
As to whether that, that person feels they have the time or the qualification to it.
The idea of it, to get that out to y'all tonight. So that you can think about it. I didn't want to spring it on all the newbies tonight. All right, we're going to elect a chairperson. But anyway, I will take care of the next agenda like I did for this one. And I will make sure that Chris is on as the liaison. I didn't give you the moment to call. So Chris, do you have any announcements for us?
I can't, because you've never voted. But I don't.
He can, yeah.
Okay. All right, next time. Next time we will do it. All right, and I really appreciate everybody being here, so. All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Meeting is adjourned.